Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Boone, and the Chair of the Committee, and apparently a number of others are out today. We are going to go ahead and proceed with public comment as well as our four presentations to be sure to knock them out. And once those are over, hopefully we will be up to four members and we will constitute a quorum. But we will go ahead and proceed with public comment first, and first up I have Ms. Henri Jordan.
Give not to the Spirit of God, everyone that's here. Hard knocks are harsh, as in the provocation, in the day of temptation, in the wilderness. Hebrews 3:8. At that time Israel had been out of ease only one month, and it repeatedly witnessed God's miraculous deliverance and provision. We must submit to Jesus' word for His power to save us from the power of the enemy. Know ye that the Lord, He is God; it is He that has made us, and not we ourselves. We are His people and the sheep of His pastor. Psalms 100:3. There are three calls to serve: make a joyful noise, serve the Lord, and come before; and three causes for serving. The Lord is God; He has made us; we are His people. God remind you, we need to serve Him. And Thakir stood and said unto the Lord, Behold, Lord, the half of my goods I give to the poor; and if I have taken anything from any man by false accusation, I restore him fourfold. Luke 19:8. Thakir's confession reveals a penitent heart; if does not suggest a doubt that he is guilty of wrongdoing. The only question is, to what extent? Are you willing to confess your false accusations? But thus saith the Lord, even the captives of the mighty shall be taken away, and the prey of the terrible shall be delivered. For I will contend with him that contended with thee, and I will save thy children. Isaiah 49:25. First, I have graven, shocked, to cut and grave. Then upon the palms of my hands reveals the eternal security of the salvation of God's people. God is all-powerful, our Deliverer, and you are not my Deliverer. I'm not your Deliverer. Jesus Christ is your Deliverer. When you seek to put your behinds in my face, you seek to treat me like a dog, and you boast about it, and you don't call it evil. The word of God says, whatever you sow, you're going to reap it. Be not deceived; God is not maul. Whatsoever man soweth, naturally also reaps. If he reaps to the flesh, each other's flesh will be corruption. And that's when the world is so corrupted, because you asked him for corruption.
Shaka Freeman.
How you doing? My name's Shaka Freeman. I'm here regarding to a recent arrest for disorderly conduct at the Tin Restaurant across Mercedes-Benz. Incident Report 252561961-1. That's Incident Report 252561961-1. APD continues to stalk me in public places, arrest me for disorderly conduct. Officers involved were Javon Holt and Richard Bolanos. So you have a code, you have your SOP that says that it's a city code that you will not use disorderly conduct to restrict or deny citizens' rights to speech, press, or religion, and that's what you're doing. So and then these ordinances don't go on your record after you complete the sentence. So it's just they're using this to harass black men in the streets. And his last arrest for me, the officers defaming my character, they even writing in the disorderly conduct charge that I'm stalking women in the bar. Nah, that's retaliation. I ran the police out of that bar, the Tin Restaurant illegally working security. I complained against APD in the Tin Restaurant of the APD Officer Ladarius, whoever his name. I sent the videos to Ian Towns. He wasn't feeling on the waitress in the bar. So then you arrest me and then make claims that I'm stalking or making unwanted advances to women in the bar for coming up there to keep seeing this one particular waitress. That has nothing to do with the disorderly conduct arrest charge. That's defamation of character. So I want to know, has anybody looked into my complaints about that officer illegally working in that Tin Restaurant? You can't enforce the rules of the business. You can't serve as security or bouncers on premises that serve alcohol, and that's what that officer was doing for over a whole year on the clock. Then you turn around and say I'm harassing? I already filed a complaint against the APD officer in that bar, and he got removed. So I'm asking for the Atlanta Police people in charge to do some investigation about this. So now you turn around and make claims that I'm harassing women in the bar, when everything is documented that I do and say by older female manager Danielle that works in there? That's just foul behavior, defaming my character. And I also, this past Saturday, I live in Cooks Park, my apartment, I was placing the back of a car for walking, for standing on the street. I told them I stand where I want, and I do what I want. I live in Cooks Park. You don't got no right to put me in the back of the car seat. Supervisor came and didn't let me out the car. Yeah, they over there lording around, over there stalking black men and stalking women. You can't just say what you want in a police report, say I threatened to beat somebody up in the police report and I didn't do it. So I'm asking for these officers over here to look into this most recent incident report that I'm reporting my most recent arrest.
Thank you, Ms.
And all the clown stuff put in the report.
Next is Jimmy Jones.
I'm giving a presentation.
Yes, so if you want to combine your time, I can dedicate six minutes to Ms. Grant, Erica Grant.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Good day, everybody. Everybody in. My name is Jimmy Jones. This is Erica Grant.
So either one of you, if you want six minutes, one person gets to speak. So otherwise, it's going to be three minutes for you and three minutes for Ms. Grant. So one of you needs to be at the podium. You both.
So we just speak one at a time?
Yes. And you are listed first, so if you want your three minutes.
So if I want to cut out early, I could just let her go, correct?
What's that?
If I want to cut out early because I'm finished?
No, you cannot. You have to use all of your time, or then it goes away. So if you want your three-minute clock to start, it'll start now.
Good day, everybody. My name is Jimmy Jones. I create intellectual properties, Innovative Ideologies is my company. There's an issue here in the city of Atlanta that has plagued Atlanta for many years, that success trafficking industry. It is an industry for people. They matriculate women into various hubs. It used to be the street, used to be online, but now it's more so the strip club. We came up with an intellectual property that was secured that by time Super Bowl come, that there's an app implemented within a permit process because they matriculate themselves through the permit system. They go into the permit system, they get background checks, they do everything that is necessary, but public safety fails them because there's no public safety factors to secure that they're not being sex trafficking. Not being sex trafficked. There's going to be a lot of women coming to the nightlife here in the city of Atlanta because it's very popular. Super Bowl is coming here. So what we're doing, we created something where the women could actually adequately enroll themselves. Not only would it increase the task-based growth and work the people in public safety by creating a sex trafficking assessment, we created something that Renee Erica is going to present that is not only needed, but it's so easy for a person to lure a person into the strip club industry by paying for their permit, kind of having a loan shark attribute, seeking the money back. So it's just more so protection that we can have avenue of accountability in the public safety, not just generating task-based growth, because that's what the permit does. That's what the permit system does. It started at 75, it's already at 300. I remember back in the day when it started up, various mayors, going back to Bill Campbell. Matter of fact, Felicia Moore used to sit right there. I'm saying, this or not. It is time to protect our women. Everybody has a choice. You got sheep, you got goat. People will go into that private sector enterprise right now, what we're doing, because this young lady here was lured into trafficking, but she escaped, of course, and we came up with something that's very necessary. I know everybody's not on the panel, but hopefully somebody will pull us in the back. We would like to profit. We couldn't show it on the screen, but it's very necessary. All right? That's my word for today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Now Erica Grant, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Erica Grant. I am a sex trafficking survivor. I have gone through a situation, and we compiled this Spades Query to circumvent people having to go into this industry, not having a voice to speak out. The Spades Query is a multifaceted document that thoroughly examines the mental state of a woman entering the adult entertainment industry. The 41 questions within protects the entertainer by implementing a voice for the voiceless, providing an exit for those who may be vulnerable to entering the slave system of social stratification, sex trafficking. This query shall be implemented by every municipal government, administration, and bureau as upgrade within any system that processes women before they enter any adult entertainment venue. This query is a proactive precautionary preventative measure clear to lower the numerical trajectory of sex trafficking in the United States. This innovative ideology is a novel intellectual property that serves as a cognitive behavioral assessment that produces acceptance and commitment recognition by facilitating an in-depth dialectical behavioral examination. A lot of these ladies come into this industry without having a voice to speak out and say what's going on in their lives. They may have some type of connection with the manager of some sort that may be putting them into this situation, and they need a voice to speak out. That's what this has been created to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Nikki Boggs.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Yeah. I live at the Landmark condominium, so we will speak about safety here and code enforcement. January 17th, 2024, we had a near fatal fire, of which we have an Airbnb investing group that has taken over the building. They've gone so far as to take over all of our common areas, including that fire-ridden area that took place in their private space during that fatal day for the fire. What we know that the city council and the city and the state could possibly do is propose local ordinances limiting, you know, specific uses of building, elder and tenant protections, strengthen enforcement for code enforcement, because at this point, they are actually building out units. The building only has units that house two bedrooms. We now are housing eight people in a bedroom, and that's through STR, Airbnb, and these investors. And they're getting their permits, if you will, very readily. They're also conducting construction throughout the building, which also will suffer the integrity of the building. The building is a very mature building, beautiful bones, and this is where the position that we're in. The city can also direct the cities of office and code compliance to diligently investigate operations going on within the building. That's something else that we're meeting. In our building, we have transient people that are coming in and out the building to actually operating as a hotel. That puts us all at safety risk at this point. We've had shootings, stabbings, someone pitched from a 15-floor window stairwell, and nothing was ever done with that. We can push the law departments to investigate possible misuse of nonprofit statuses as well. Again, elder and tenant protection. We have bolted doors throughout the building, exit doors. This includes the pool area. This includes the area where the fire took place. Those are exit doors that are completely blocked. That means if something takes place within the building, then we're actually trapped in the building. We have one elevator out of three elevators working, one, and that's been happening since the past few years, and it's not a maintenance issue. It's something that's taking place with this particular group. We have damaged doors that takes away from the security of our homeowners, allowing other people to walk in off of the street into the building, and then ultimately sleeping in the stairwells, or sleeping throughout the hallways, or coming into the building and then pulling and knocking on doors. The construction throughout the building, again, as I stated, is suffering with the integrity of the building, and it's going to cause the building to eventually collapse. As I mentioned multiple times, I have people that I know that lived and served side in Florida. If something is not done without readily handing out the permits and the code enforcement and allowing them to do construction, then we will be in trouble, and you'll have another surfside in Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our public comment period. We will now move on to our presentations, and first up, we have Atlanta Police Department's Crime Statistics Report, Deputy Chief Charles Hampton. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Sorry. All right. Right now, for our overall crime, we're down 8% for the city. We only have right now one zone that's up in crime.
It's our deputy chief. They got the wrong presentation up here. If they could just pause for just a second while they get your sheet up here.
I don't think it's a presentation. It should have just said the crime numbers.
I think it's just one sheet. I think it's your weekly report. Go ahead and proceed then.
Okay. Again, overall, crime is down 8%. Right now, we only have one zone out of the six that's up in crime, and that zone right now, for the past week and the past month, is showing a double-digit reduction. So they are now moving in the right direction. Homicide is down 26%. The clearance rate is 85%, and right now, the leading motivation for homicides are escalating disputes, so individuals not being able to resolve their issues and escalating to, a lot of times, just gunfire. A person shot is down 9%. We did have a couple of incidents over this past week with some juveniles. That's being handled by Aggravated Assault Unit. Our intel and gangs units are currently conducting that investigation as we speak. Robberies continue to plague us a little bit, especially our pedestrian robberies. So we're just asking citizens, especially when they do online sales, to utilize public spaces, especially like our police precincts, to conduct those sales, because we're all seeing that those sales are occurring in isolated incidents, and those are ultimately leading to some robberies. We have just completed a successful heat wave. We did SIS operations. The last one was conducted in September 17th, and out of those deployments, there were 103 arrests, 34 convicted felons, 24 documented gang members were arrested, and 30 guns were seized. So overall, a good partnership with our local, state, and federal partners, and so they'll be moving into our fall campaign as well. During PAL, in the two-week period, they saw over 475 visitors, both adults and juveniles. And then one of our PAL boxers, Mario Smith, has advanced to the U.S. Boston National Semifinals. And the last hour report out is we are 266 days away from the start of FIFA. So again, we have eight matches to include a semifinal. That's the area that I'm ultimately responsible for, and we are looking forward to hosting this international event, but that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Councilmember Norwood, any questions? All right. Thank you, Chief. Next up, we have the quarterly report from PAD, Ms. Moki Masius.
Good afternoon to members of council who are here today and those watching online. I am happy to be here because I have some great news to share in terms of our progress on the dashboard, which I mentioned at my last presentation to this committee. So I'm looking forward to sharing more information with you. As you well know, excuse me, where's my clicker? There we go. As you well know, we provide community response through 311, but also through 911 with call transfers, and we also provide long-term case management and direct services to folks who are diverted from jail. Before we dive into the dashboard presentation, I'd like to share a snapshot of our call and diversion volume over the last several years, because I think it kind of shows our opportunities for expansion and scaling, as well as the evolution of our model. So as you can see here, we're attracting a fairly consistent number of calls through 311, which represents the people who are actively seeking out PAD community response through the non-emergency line at the city. At the same time, we're seeing sort of a switch from officers diverting directly to PAD to starting to utilize the diversion center, which, as you know, opened in January of this year. So we are seeing the sort of intended evolution of diversion being directed to the 24-hour center, and we've seen an almost tenfold increase in diversions as a result of that center opening. So very happy to see that, you know, with our partners at Grady, who's operating that center. Where we see a huge opportunity is in the diversion of 911 calls, right, which is currently only limited to a few call codes. So with this in mind, we've paid special attention to 911 call data to understand what calls are coming into 911 that could be more appropriate for PAD and reduce the burden on law enforcement. All right, so a bit about our data dashboard, which I will be sharing the link to for council members after this meeting, so you're able to explore it yourself. It's currently in a beta version. It's not yet public, but we are soliciting stakeholder feedback. So what we look at with this dashboard is basically how our system currently responds to people who are struggling with mental health, substance use, or extreme poverty, and the impact of that response, right? So we've organized the dashboard into three sections, including, first, requests for service that are coming into 311, 911, or directly from officers, the response by either PAD or APD, and the outcome of these responses for individuals. So to do this, we're bringing in data from PAD, we're bringing in APD, both arrest data as well as 911 calls for service data and 311 data on a monthly basis. Although this is included as a deliverable of our city contract, the funding for the project was actually supported by the Carter Center, which worked with Neighborhood Nexus to actually build it out. So, you know, really great partnerships locally that have made this possible. So as we navigate through the dashboard, we'll be able to explore the data by time and geography. So the default is going to show citywide data for year-to-date, much as you can see here on the slides. All data, however, that has location information, which is most of it, will be able to be explored by council district, APD zone, and at the NPU level, either by month or by year. So to provide an example of how we might use this dashboard, we'll look at NPU-M. So obviously, the NPU, which covers most of downtown, for the most recent month, we have data for, which is August 2025. Once we select the geography and the timeframe, we can explore the number of requests coming in, as well as then the response to those requests. I will note that officer diversions are only requests that are coming to PAD directly and not the folks that they are bringing to be diverted at the diversion center at this time. So as I mentioned, you know, we took a particular interest in 911 call for service data, and I think what has been really interesting in working with our partners at 911 is just making sure that we really understand what the 911 data is telling us, to reflect those calls that really are the most similar to calls that otherwise do come through 311, right? So what we looked at were initial disposition codes that were highly correlated with homelessness, with mental health, health or substance use, and those also that had been designated as priority three by the call taker. Priority three calls are those where the caller reports no crime in progress, no weapons, no physical fight, no threat to life, or danger of property being lost, right? We also only include those calls that were already connected, or were dispatched, excuse me, to police instead of those that were designated for police or fire. So what we can see here, even in this limited geography, is that 911 continues to be used for many calls that would be more appropriate for a community response team rather than a police dispatch. So in August, for example, in NPU-M, well, we saw 36 calls for people who are proactively calling 311. We saw 409 calls to 911 that were priority three for an issue that is highly correlated with homelessness or poverty, and where a police officer was dispatched. So just to consider the amount of time and resources that APD is spending responding to those types of calls. So moving on, I won't go too deeply into this, but here's another way to look at this data. It describes the call codes and the volume over time. I'll note that here we say person in crisis. The label is actually an outdated term that we're working with our partners at 911 to change the terminology so that it aligns with the most up-to-date terminology in the So once we understand the requests received, we can dig into what the response outcomes were. So I'm not going to get into it here in the interest of time, but the dashboard will allow you to explore the PAD response outcome, time to scene, as well as APD response, including more detail on the APD responses that lead to both diversion or arrest. We'll also include data from APD on reasons that someone was arrested for diversion-eligible charge. That's something that APD has begun to track with the opening of the diversion center. So that data will also be included in the dashboard, just to be able to kind of recognize officer discretion in these situations, which on their face may appear as if they were a divertible charge, but in fact, there was rationale as to why they went ahead with the arrest. We're very indebted to our partners at APD, as well as particularly folks at 911 for working with us to really understand that data. Lastly, we'll also include qualitative information in the dashboard. So we'll be including 311 caller survey data, as you see here on the screen. We'll be including caller testimonials also gathered through 311. And then we'll also include testimonials, like this one from one of our PAD participants, as well as stories from our community response team, just so that community members are able to really understand from more of a human perspective, kind of what's happening behind the numbers, to understand what the impact of our response is. So in terms of next steps, we're going to be working with our partners at 911 to continue to increase the number of calls that are coming from the 911 system to to increase the number of calls that are coming from the 911 system to PAD. We're continuing to work with our partners at 311 to enhance community awareness of 311 as an option, and the Supportive Services Delivery Team over there, which does an excellent job. And then we're going to be really focused over the next 45 days in receiving stakeholder feedback on this dashboard, so that once it launches by end of October, early November, we'll be able to publish the dashboard with input from our partners, both within the city, as well as other agencies that are connected to our work. So that's it for me. I'm happy to answer questions. I will also be, as I mentioned, I'll be sending the beta link to the dashboard, which is not yet public, to council members, and we'll be looking for your feedback and any comments that you may have. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Councilman Norwood? Thanks so much.
Thanks.
All right, our third out of four is the quarterly update from the Office of the Public Defender.
Good afternoon. I'm Kenneth Dase. I'm the Director and Chief Public Defender for the City's Office of the Public Defender. Very pleased today to present our quarterly presentation. Some of our case statistics for the period of June through August. As you can see, the video evidence continues to dominate considerable amount of time for our attorneys and investigator staff, and that's primarily in viewing multiple videos. Most of any police encounters with any law enforcement agencies include multiple body worn cameras and dash cams, and of course, we're required to view those, so that's why that number is significantly larger than most others. Our DUI cases and in custody cases have remained relatively consistent, and over a three-month period, we had approximately about 450 new appointments for each month, for a total of 1,359 appointments over that period. We're very grateful in our office to have immigration law practitioners on staff who provide, and those positions have been provided in their inception through grant funding, and we actually have, through current grant funding, a new immigration fellow that is in the process of onboarding. But they conduct the PIDEA advisories, which are mandated when we have a client that may have an immigration issue that may cause some deportment, deportable consequences. And over the last three months have been just relatively slight increases month over month. Our traffic cases are distinguished by a couple of overlaps. As you see, there are traffic misdemeanor and city ordinance. These are all traffic-related cases. The 664 represents predominantly in-court appointments of traffic cases. The 480 is representative of those that are in custody or folks that were arrested. If you consider cases like DUI and suspended license. And the city ordinance is, that 106 represents cases where there are traffic and ordinance violations. So you consider, for example, a suspended license case that also accompanies an obstruction or disorderly conduct. And so that represented a grand total of 1,250 cases related to traffic over the course of June through August. Our department has actively been streamlining our outreach activities. This is very helpful from a public safety standpoint in reducing chronic recidivism. It proactively reduces the number of qualitative life crimes we also see, and it severely, significantly increases our community stability and the amount of timing that a third-party service provider can provide that service delivery through referrals. And as evidenced by that, right here, you see some of our staff members volunteering at the AT-PROMA Center. We've been consistent with the AT-PROMA Center since that facility actually opened. And this summer, we also had a pretty robust intern group. They shadowed our client advocates and our attorneys, and they assisted quite often with some trial preparation, and they created a revised Know Your Rights presentation for our office. And so we're actually looking forward to some of those interns returning next year. They've expressed that interest, and so hopefully, we can convince some of them to go into this discipline of the law. This picture shows some of our homeless outreach endeavors, and of course, our department is consistently engaged in this type of work over the months, supporting unhoused citizens for a little bit over a decade now. And the locations of our legal clinics, our various legal clinics, are shown here by their corresponding neighborhood planning units. The city NPUs have been a great source of identifying those residents that may be most in need of service. It also provides us with a pretty good indicator of what services may be needed in a specific community as well. Likewise, our holistic employment program is also a fantastic community stabilizer for us. The members of that unit work very hard with our staff and professionals in identifying those that may be in need of stable employment, and we're always seeking new relationships with prospective employers so that we can continue this great work. Over the last three months, our department's employment program had 43 total referrals to the program, and of those, 22 individuals met the required requirements internally for us to move them toward an employer recommendation and introduction. Of those 22 that were accepted, they met with our staff members at minimum three times, and that ultimately led to about a 36% hiring rate. And of course, part of that employment assistance includes help with eliminating outstanding warrants. Most warrants, particularly for old outstanding misdemeanor, low-level misdemeanors, or even failure to appear, can be a significant barrier to employment, and these stories kind of illustrate the good work that we do along those lines in getting individuals who currently were more or less unemployable back to work. Just as well, we also love our client reunification stories because they illustrate how critical it is for us to have our social work staff, as well as our client advocate staff members, who work together to identify mental health issues. They work together to provide counsel to address very specific social service needs, and ultimately provide a great degree of stability beyond the legal case. Our partnership with Gateway Center has also been one of multiple successful outcomes over the years, and in many ways, our partnerships overlap the services that we provide, and so that consistent communication has been pretty good because between those two entities, our entities and theirs, it's allowed for more directed and faster service delivery. In this instance that we've illustrated here, we've worked together to get this individual both in treatment and employed with one of our partners, and this individual has been there for three months, and in that period of time was also able to become promoted. So going forward, as we mentioned before, what we're doing now is streamlining some of our legal clinics and also working to realign our legal staff to meet the needs of what we are seeing as an increase in the number of appointments that we're receiving from the court. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do not have any questions, so thank you very much, Mr. Dase.
All right, thank you.
All right, lastly, we have the quarterly report from Atlanta Fire Rescue Department.
All right, again, good afternoon, Councilman Hillis. Again, my name is James McLemore. I'm stepping in for Chief Smith this afternoon to provide our PSLA fourth-quarter metric report. Again, our goals and objectives, providing the safest possible work environment for all members, continuing to focus on AFRD initiatives, enhancement, and accomplishments, and with city council reviewing and monitoring AFRD emergency services that are provided to the city of Atlanta, and maintaining competitive compensation for AFRD members, and regular reviews of the condition and the needs of AFRD fleet and facilities. Our service metrics, as you can see, fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, fourth quarter, running about on average, also with aviation. Next, we have our situation found for both downtown responses and aviation. A total of 83,590 responses this year for downtown, and also 11,000 total for aviation this fiscal year for '25. And just looking at the final quarter for downtown, 19,000 to 21,000, just a 9% increase for downtown. And on aviation, 2,900 calls for the fourth quarter comparatively from fiscal year '24 to '25, showing a 1.4 increase. On this slide, this breaks down the situation found category, breaks out EMS calls and how they are separated, and then is based off of fiscal year '24 and '25 for the fourth quarter. Overall, from the fiscal, from the quarter, a 7.2 increase from 11,184 to 11,985. And other services also increased 9.6 for the organization. Next, we look at the service metrics for aviation. And again, EMS calls were broken out. From 1,012 to 1,213, we showed a 19% increase based off of the quarter. And then other services, there was a 1.9 increase from 2821 to 2,873, which represented a 1.8 increase over the fourth quarter of both fiscal years. So our service metrics for... Our service metrics for downtown inspections, comparing fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25 for the fourth quarter. April, well, total was 2,571 for fiscal year '24, and for fiscal year '25, fourth quarter, down 19 to 1,968. This was due to, we had a vacancy rate. We were able to hire some people within May and got them trained up to the inspection one and two level, and once they completed their certifications, they were allowed to then do inspections by themselves, and that increased the number for June. So moving forward, those numbers should continue to rise. Now for aviation inspections, there were no real vacancies in aviation departments, so all the numbers remained close to the same. Totalling for facility inspections, you had a total of 933 in fiscal year '24, fourth quarter, and to 942 for fiscal year '25, fourth quarter, and then fueling operations out at the aviation department, a total of 4217 versus this year, 4305. Next, we take a look at the fleet. So our fleet orders and what have come in. We received a frontline pumper for aviation that was delivered in April. We had seven command vehicles, including EMS supervisor trucks, a total of 10, that were delivered in April of '25 also. We had a TDA that was delivered in May that went to Station 11. We have a hybrid truck that's in production that's due in December. We have five pumpers that are in production that are due in May. We've been assured by the vendor they will be here before FIFA. We also have a Spartan TDA in production that is due here in July of '26. Also, aviation has one that has been ordered that is due in November of '26, and also we have eight Spartan pumpers that have been ordered, and also three that should be trucks. Well, it says pumper at the bottom for eight, three for three. That should be trucks, and they have been ordered, and they are due here by December of '27. Next, facility enhancements. Station 34, we have renovations in progress, estimated completion of October of '25. The City Hall Tech Services Room is in progress and is due to be handed to us in November of '25. Also, we have three stations currently under construction, Station 30 on Cleveland Avenue, Station 26 on Howell Mill, and now Station 25 that we just broke ground on, on the corner of Beecher and Benjamin E. Mays. Station 31, we're still in progress for it. And also continuation of our AFRD bay doors. It says, on whole budget, we are working on legislation currently to fund it and to complete the bay door renovation for all stations. Also, Station 15, the renovation was completed. Station 21's renovation was completed. Station 14 and Station 1 have all been completed this year and the last quarter. Recruitment and hiring. We've had a total of 1,200 firefighter recruits, then we have 146 paramedic EMT firefighter recruit applications, and then we have prior experienced firefighters of two, for a total of 1,439 that have applied. And once we get through the process, rejections, withdrawn, we were able to hire six as of June 30th of 2025. And some of our upcoming, well, 24 recruit Class 01 graduated in May of '25. Class 2402 graduated in August, and our two upcoming classes that are now leaving EMS and heading over to fire school, we have one, 24-03, will graduate tentatively January 26th of the year '26. And Class 2501 will graduate April 20th of 2026. Again, some of our key initiatives with recruitment and hiring is our red shirt program, streamlining, working on streamlining the hiring process, and working to get prior experienced art candidates in the door. Next is our fiscal year 2025 quarter for attrition. Under the sworn category, we've had a total of one retired, six have resigned. We had one termination. Five hired in April, one in May, giving us a net total of plus three in April, minus two in May, and minus three in June. And under civilian attrition, we've had one retired last quarter. We had a total of six resignations, no terminations, and none were hired during this period, giving us a net... us a net of negative one in April, negative two in May, and negative four in June for attrition. Fiscal year twenty-five quarter for our community engagement. Again, we continue to support the mayor's midnight basketball. We've been involved with West End Mall commemoration, the Public Safety Training Center grand opening. We've supported Fresh Meal Kids distributions, NPU meetings, town hall meetings, senior citizens outreach, we've done cooling centers. We did the Shirley Franklin recognition ceremonies out at the park. We had our firefighter memorial, numerous, a couple of recruit graduations, and last parks and wrecked popsicles in the park. Our summer youth employment program recap. We actually had a total of nine college interns. We had two high school interns, and we had twenty-three members in our cadet program, which gave us a total of thirty-four individuals that were part of our organization over the summer. You know, this prepares the interns for workplace skills, provided knowledge of the fire service roles and duties, and provided a lot of hands-on training and demonstrations. The cadets kind of learn what we do on a daily basis as a firefighter. You know, they did live burns, a lot of training, extrication training, they did ride alongs. They kind of see what we do on a daily basis. They tested for the CPAT, and hopefully we'll have some of those individuals that were part of the cadet program to join our fire service very soon. Some certifications that they walked away with were CPR certifications, and they became Community Emergency Response Team Certification, which is ASERT, and Certificate of Completion for their summer. Some of our accomplishments as an organization, we maintained our AFRD accreditation status. We're continuing to, our station upgrades and renovations, our youth mentorship over the summer, and then with APS, the Atlanta Public Safety Trainer Center opened up. Our fleet is continuing to improve. Our FAA inspection was successfully completed. We completed our budget presentation and also finalized the CIPS annual compliance report for fiscal year twenty-five. We also integrated our fire report system into the TALIMI application. With that, that was an overview of the fire department. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Michael Moore. I sort of have a few questions on some separate, different matters. So, starting with the goals and objectives of the fire department, and this is just kind of a general question, and I'll read two of the inter, seemingly interrelated goals and objectives, but it's listed to provide the safest possible work environment for all members, and then to address all recruiting and hiring or recruitment and hiring needs. And so taking those two together, are we still running three firefighters on an apparatus? And if so, what percentage of apparatus would you say are still only being staffed with three firefighters?
I will have to get the numbers for you, but the goal every day is to put four people on the engine each day. That is the goal of division, to higher up if needed, to provide four firefighters on each engine. The latter trucks run with three. But I can get further details and the percentages for you.
Okay, I greatly appreciate that. And also related to that, and kind of my further questions, is it seems there's been a, quite a bit of an increase in calls for service downtown. How are you all addressing that with the challenges faced with both staffing and the apparatus issues?
Okay, so, good, great question. We just implemented, probably it's been two or three months ago, our fast truck is a first arrival service truck. We put this truck in service to handle alarm bells, elevator entrapments, and carbon monoxide calls, and to take that pressure off of the trucks that were responding to these calls, and that unit is actually averaging twelve point five calls a shift. So it's taken that, those calls off of two point four million dollars piece of equipment to a eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment with two people on it. So that's a good thing. We've had so much success, we're looking at data now to possibly move, create another truck to the lower side of downtown and to the Buckhead Corridor, where we have those high calls of alarm bells, elevator entrapment calls, carbon monoxide calls. So we're looking into the data to move forward to get those in place. And also, we have ramped up our quick units. As you've seen, we've had two Rivians that were given to us, and we also had some EMS vehicles. We have two live EMS units that are responding to calls in the area also. And when we have big events, we have the ability to ramp up. So we just came out of Labor Day, where we had Dragon Con, we had two major football games in the area. So during this period of time, we put two EMS trucks, two quick units in service for the downtown corridor, just to help with that swell of the population in that area, because we know that the traffic is real heavy, and we need the smaller equipment to navigate the streets now to handle those big crowds. So those things that we do adjust to when, when the time, when there's a need for it.
So you refer to, I believe, the newer fast truck and a quick truck. What is, what's the main difference between those two, and what is each staffed with?
Okay, so the, the fast truck is strictly for elevator entrapments, carbon monoxide calls, and alarm bells. Two members are on there to handle those calls, but, well, they're for first response for those calls. If there's a need of an emergency, they can always upgrade the call, but they are primarily the first to arrive on the scene to see what it is and to mitigate it, to keep that big truck from going there. And the quick units are just, they'll have two paramedics or a paramedic and an advanced EMT to run EMS calls.
And then some numbers, where we're seeing decreases, but, I mean, to me, it's still not a, a good indication is inspections downtown. And this comes to mind because we've had a number of serious fires, especially at some apartment complexes, while in Councilmember Norwood's district a year or two ago, where there were obvious issues that fire inspections that have caught, but we've seen about a twenty-three percent decrease in inspections when you look at this year versus last year. So what is the cause for that, and how are y'all looking to get those inspections back up to where they need to be?
So I alluded to earlier, there were, we had a high vacancy rate. We hired about ten people that were hired, but they needed to get the training so that they could go out on their own. They have gotten the training to become Fire Inspector One, and two, that's the certification you need to perform the inspection. So they have gotten that, and then our number should increase. They have increased, they went up in, hold on, let me see. So in June, in June versus fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five, there was an increase. So they came online in May, they were getting the training, so now in June they have caught back up, so it should move level or increase as we move forward through the year.
And so, a few follow-up questions. I understand they do need that specific training, but baseline, do those have to be sworn firefighters or those uns sworn members?
Those civilian inspectors.
And what is, you may have mentioned it, I may have missed it, but what is the current vacancy rate or vacancy number in that?
For inspections?
Yes.
We're working, we have five vacancies downtown, none down, none at aviation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before hopping to the big issue, a few other small items. Number one is, you mentioned the AFRD bay door project, which has been, I guess, has moved to phase two. What is the challenge or holdup for getting the, the budget approved for that?
No holdup, we're just, I think we're finalizing the numbers and getting the legislation done, so it should be moving forward quickly.
And then the specific District Nine item, old Station Twenty-Two, I'd heard some back and forth about what that might be turned into. The last update was kind of a air truck station and renovating that station to, to hold an air truck. Has there been any changes or updates to that plan?
I am not sure about the air truck. Chief Buck, you have any updates with the repurposing of Twenty-Two? No updates, still working. Okay, I'll get back with you on the purpose of Twenty-Two.
Okay. So the, the big issue I want to raise again, which we all know has been an issue for many years, starting because we had a prior administration who made no apparatus orders for their five years in office, despite the council's pleas. Kind of slightly been on my radar, but has, has been brought back to my attention specifically yesterday because there was apparently a fire on Continental Colony Parkway, where there's some purported delays in getting some units there because the key units in that area were out of service. And while there weren't any at that specific fire, it does appear to me we've had a kind of an increase in fire fatalities in the city of Atlanta. And so I want to start with the issue at hand, which many of us know about, is, you know, it's not a, you know, I mentioned the, the city's specific issue, and that's because we didn't order any fire trucks for four or five plus years under the prior administration. We've worked with Mayor Dickens and his team and the chief, and we have now ordered, I don't know the, the fire number specifically, but if you look at both fire apparatus and police vehicles, we've, we've ordered well over forty million dollars worth of equipment. The challenge with that is, which has finally made its way all the way up to the US Capitol, is the, really, the monopoly that has been created by private equity firms buying up basically every fire truck manufacturer in America and potentially elsewhere. And so even when this council approves, let's say, another twenty million dollars to purchase fire apparatus, we aren't going to see them, number one, we're not going to see them for two, three plus years. And number two, equally concerning, is when about five years ago, we would pay maybe seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for an engine, we're now paying double that.
Yeah.
So taking all that into account and understanding this is a nationwide issue, not specific to the city of Atlanta, you know, how are we addressing this with, you know, only the stuff that we can control? We cannot control this, as I said, it's made its way all the way to the US Senate and the US House, and they have had hearings on this issue. But, you know, we're seeing progress, I believe, on the apparatus front here in the city, but, you know, we have all of these orders in, it's going to take a while to get them all in because of the aforementioned issues. But where are we specifically with our apparatus? I have not seen a report recently. You know, how many trucks, you know, today, for example, how many trucks and engines do we have out of service?
I do not have the number with me. Do one of y'all have an update today? But as I can say, we've worked with the administration, we have been able to order, we will continue to order. We also, if there's an issue with delays, we're in touch with procurement, doing vendor complaints to make sure that they follow the contract. So we're doing everything in our power to make sure we hold their feet to the fire per se to get our equipment here.
And so I would just ask, number one, for that report, whether you can sound it off or not is one thing, but I would also like to see it emailed to me and the fellow PSLA members. And then specifically, could you speak to the, the fire issues and any potential response delays due to apparatus out of service around that Continental Colony Parkway fire yesterday?
I cannot speak to it. Let me get the information. I have not reviewed the information for that fire. Just, I, I just, I can get you something, you can speak to it. I bring up Chief Rob, our operations chief.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Gary Robert, Assistant, I mean Deputy Chief of Field Operations. I could speak on that Continental Colony fire. All our apparatus around that area was in service. Our first apparatus was on scene, which was actually the battalion chief within three minutes of that. So there was no delay of that actual fire. Engine five and the thirty, thirty-six, they both was in house, they both was on that fire, so they would have been the first two to actually be on the scene of that, so.
What engines were those again?
Engine five and engine thirty-six.
Okay. Going to come to the, the microphone.
Those are the neighboring stations, thirty-six and five.
Okay. And just staying on the apparatus issue, who, who, maybe it's you, since you're over operations, but who is making the calls about kind of moving trucks around? Because we already have stations out of service because they're being rebuilt. For example, Station Twenty-Six and Councilmember Norwood's district, which I also have some first, first call territory in District Nine. Now, we were told, hey, Engine Twenty-Six is going to be moved to Station Twenty-Three, which is in my district, just outside of District Eight. And then Truck Twenty-Six was going to be moved to Station Eight, which is also in District Nine. But I'm, I've heard that those are really being farmed out even further, so we're now widening the space where we do not have a, a truck or engine assigned because of those challenges.
And I'll speak on today. Actually, today we only have Engine Twenty, like you said, the stations that don't have a, a station, they are out of service today, and that's Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, and Station Thirty. The trucks, Fourteens and Sixteens are two trucks without. So as far as loaning them out, you know, we do have, what we have, Chief Buck, five coming in, end of December. Right now, we are just kind of make it do what we got, but we are just, when these five come in, we had five, I don't want to speak to the exact numbers of Chief Buck, speak to the exact numbers we had come in, but that has been a tremendous help, these reserve apparatus. And I'll let Chief Buck talk about these reserve apparatus, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chief Buck, Assistant Chief Technical Services. We have one additional truck, it's coming in December of twenty-five, it's one of our hybrid trucks. May of twenty-six, we have five engines that will be here. So that will pretty much cover the particular areas in question. Like Chief, Deputy Chief Rob stated, our trucks are farmed out not too far away from that particular territory. You are correct, the Truck Twenty-Six was at Station Eight, and Truck Engine Twenty-Six was supposed to go to Twenty-Three's, but as you know, Station Twenty-Three, we're in a process of, you know, currently renovating that station. We have the issues with it. That renovation is going to be spearheaded by Department of Enterprise Asset Management, Dean. We were talking about something with the vertical funding in your district, District Nine with Twenty-Three's, but we're going to continue to let Dean spearhead that project, and we'll utilize that piece of vertical funding to complete Station Thirty-Eight. We actually have a site visit out there tomorrow. But as far as the engines, it's pretty much a year or two turnaround for those engines. With the tariffs, we can't control it. We pretty much have all of our specs with our contracts, so whenever it's time for our replacement, we have the spec for the engine, specs for the trucks, so we shouldn't have any delays in that ordering process. So that's about all I have.
Right, thank you for that info. And so just to be sure that I'm clear, and I, I would still like to see it in, in an email, all that we have out of service today is Engine Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, Thirty, Truck Fourteen, and Truck Sixteen. And there are no special units out of service, like Squad Four or anything like that?
There is not, there is not today.
Somewhat related on that same issue, how has the turnaround been or improvement, hopefully, the partnership with DPW in getting these units repaired and back out on the street versus where we were a couple of years ago?
So pretty much with the Department of DPW, we have the members, we utilize various vendors throughout the state and various states in proximity. So we have them coming out on specific days to take care of any current issues at that particular time. particular time. So usually we have a specific day for units to come out and we schedule those units to the shop to take care of any necessary repairs at that particular time. So it's not a huge turnaround in it, but we have wear and tear. Some of our engines were in their late stages, but we are prepared to fix them, get them back out to serve the citizens of Atlanta.
Thank you for that. And that concludes my questions, but I just hope that this, not just Atlanta issue, but this nationwide issue with the fire apparatus monopoly will continue to garner, you know, public awareness and people will put pressure on their congressmen, their senators, et cetera, to really call that group to task because it's, it's unacceptable. Anyone else with questions for AFRD?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sitting in, but I just want to say thank you to you all, to AFRD as well as the Fire Foundation for taking the time to meet with one of our families in East Atlanta that y'all saved. And it's really thankful to the battalion in Station 13 for opening up your doors. And one, thank you for the incredible service y'all gave, including resuscitating their pet and like just the work that y'all did and how grateful that family is for y'all. And thank you for continuing to save lives and also allowing them the opportunity to say thank you, grateful to y'all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Norwood, Councilmember Collins, any questions for fire? Thank you all very much. Councilmember Brock Tari has.
Yeah, I apologize and I meant to ask earlier when APD was in, but I got everything crossed. It was my understanding that there had been at one point a study that was being conducted by Georgia Tech on our BEAT assignments and how each of our AP, each of our zones were doing. If, is there any chance that that has been completed? And if not, can we find out what it would take to get completed? Because from my understanding, Tech did this a while ago, or supposed to have.
It, it was finally completed. Deputy Chief Hampton, speak to that.
I know there were some questions that we asked Georgia Tech for some updates, so let me circle back and give you a response to.
Thank you. Curious just because some of our districts have grown, whereas others haven't. Some of our zones are spread a little thin, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get the answer for you and let you go.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
You, Chair, for letting me crash.
Definitely. Well, unless we have another member filter in, have you heard anything from? Okay. Well, with that being said, we have completed our public comment, we have completed our presentations, so we will take up the legislative agenda in committee of a whole at the next council meeting. So thank you all so much for coming.